I'll call the September 18, 2017 City Council Meeting to order. Call the roll.
John Hawkins?
Here.
Matt McKinney?
Here.
Brian Miller?
Here.
Jim Talbot?
Here.
Logan Welch?
Here. We've received a request from the applicant to defer the 5:45 PM public hearing on rezoning. Therefore, I will call for a motion to approve the agenda with the item 16 removed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We need a motion.
Aye.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, same sign. Motion approved. Prove the thing right. Um, pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance. The stupid flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the time of the meeting that a citizen may address the council on a matter not on the agenda. Except in cases of emergency, the city council will not take any action at this meeting, but may ask city staff to research the matter or have the matter placed on the agenda for a future meeting. Anyone have any? Paul?
Just last week, I became acquainted with a family in town that's homeless. And I know, I don't think there is any housing right now for homeless people. And I know with their situation, they're living in tents out at Briggs Woods. And of course, they have to pay $20 a day, which is not helping their situation in terms of accumulating enough money so that they can afford housing again. And I know that they were living in a vehicle, which the vehicle was repossessed because they were late in payments. And I'm just wondering, I know I had some discussion with Public Health and also the city manager. Does the city have any housing for homeless people?
Not that I know.
I'm just wondering if you want, maybe want to have one unit of housing, just in case we have a situation like this again where there is a homeless family.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? Public information?
Maybe it'd be, at this point in the agenda, we could point out that we did remove item 16 on the agenda. If anyone came to speak about that, this would be the only time to speak on that matter. Just making sure everyone's aware.
Okay, I have a proclamation for Falls Prevention Awareness Day, which is September 22nd, this Friday. Whereas falls among older adults are a significant problem and pose a major threat to health and independence resulting in high personal and economic direct costs among Iowa's older citizens, falls a leading cause of hospitalization and serious injury. And whereas falls among older adults occur in all socio-economic and cultural groups, with nearly one-third of older adults experience a fall. And whereas the fastest growing segment of the Iowa population is amongst persons over 65. And ensuring that healthcare providers screen for all risk among older adults and provide resource material to older adults, their families and caregivers are steps that can help reduce the number of injuries due to falls. And whereas promoting the use of evidence-based classes to improve strength and balance has shown to reduce fall risk among older adults. And Webster City currently sponsors several of these groups. Now therefore, I, John Hawkins, Mayor of the City of Webster City, hereby proclaim September 22nd of 2017 as Falls Prevention Awareness Day, Webster City. They do have a, they meet around town quite a fair bit for that, for the elderly, so, and apparently it's pretty successful. So, for those who are interested, get ahold of us, we'll tell you how to get them, get to go to one of them. Thank you. Anyone else have any?
Yeah, I'd like to touch on a couple of events. One, that happened last weekend, one coming up next weekend. The Webster City Sons of American Legion had the fly-in drive-in. I think we served 60 to 70 meals, 10 of which were out-of-town pilots that flew in. So, great event, great awareness, a lot of traffic to the airport. The other event is this weekend Bark in the Park. It's a Wilson Brewer Historic Committee is putting it on for the Wilson Brewer Historical Park. Train depot and amenities there. You can bring your dog, it's a big musician for kids, events, vendors, so I encourage you to go. It's Sunday, September 24th, 1 to 5. That's all I got.
Okay. Yeah, the Doodlebug had a successful week of sort of, of get-togethers and celebrations or whatever, and their drive. See Adrian driving his scooter out to the, towards the...
You're sitting on one?
I just sat on it. We didn't try to get him to go.
[laughing]
They had not, for people from 19 different states came actually, so they had a big turnout.
Good coverage in the paper.
Yeah. Next one is B, minutes and claims. The following items have been deemed to be non-controversial routine actions to be approved by the council in a single motion. If a council member or a member of the audience wishes to have an item removed from this list, it will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. We have item one is minutes of September 5, 2017. Two is a resolution on payroll for the period ending September 2nd, and paid on September 8, and a resolution on bills and the funds list. How would you like, Jeff?
Love to approve collectively.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, same sign. Motion approved. Next section of C is general agenda. Item one of the agenda is deferred from the 9/5 meeting. There's a resolution establishing a nuisance at 612 Seneca Street and ordering the abatement thereof within 30 days. Daniel or, or, Jack, did you want to say anything on that or at this meeting? Or you want, want us to start first?
Well, I really, I really don't have much to add from what we talked about the last meeting. I did get the minutes sent to you and a copy of the bid. And I talked to Jeff Hav Allen, who's the contractor, on how long he thought it would take to tear it down. And he thought about two to three weeks. And then we discussed about starting out after harvest and last couple of harvests and then about the middle and wherever, so.
Yeah, we, we got your notes and stuff, so thanks very much for that, Jan. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Dave, you want?
Yeah, I, I think the consensus from the council was to request information on, on the contractor and to verify the awarding of the contract. There was discussion in terms of the uniqueness of the building and the size and the time it may take to demolish that. It was also a concern in terms of the timetable of when that demolition may take place. I guess I'm not sure that if Jeff had alluded to whether it'd be something possibly to be accomplished by the end of the calendar year, or that you think it'd be something that had to be put off until the spring.
He said it'd take two to three weeks when you got started.
Okay. And it said weather permitting, I guess, but, but of course.
Right.
But, um, anyone have any thoughts on?
So, at this point, he didn't give you any concrete. Yes, he could, the concern I would have is, you know, contractors get busy too, and without any kind of a set date, may come to you in a month and a half and say it's got to be marched. So, he, he didn't, wouldn't commit to a date as, as far as my understanding correct.
We, yeah, I guess that's probably true. An exact date, no, there wasn't anything set.
I'd just like to say that, you know, a couple of weeks ago, when you're in front of the council, I feel that's a little hard on you. And I, I, I just want you to know that I personally feel that the co-op is doing what they can in faith to, to take this building down as, as directed by the city. Knowing the complexity of knocking down a brick silo and harvest season coming up, I would, I'd hate to hinder that. It sounds like you got a plan in place. I would probably just want to set a date to revisit this come the first of the year and see where we're at. I think moving forward with the abatement, I'm against.
Well, I think another thing I liked last time we were talking about this, I asked a question, Elise said, you know, the cooperative folks have been pretty nice, they're easy to work with, so we're not getting a runaround that we have had with a lot of private businesses. So, I like that. But I also like to emphasize, and I believe Connie Evans mentioned, you know, maybe somewhere the city looks at having a difference between the residential and businesses so we can treat them a little different. And I did appreciate that compliment, or comment last month, week or on that. So, I guess what I would like to do is, like Logan says, let's look at it one D, January, and see where we're at then. I mean, we should have an idea, but it hasn't fallen down the last 30 years, it's not going to fall down between now and then. I hope not anyway.
Do you want to make a motion to?
I have a quick question.
Oh, sure.
So, just playing devil's advocate here, is there any liability on the city if it would fall down in December?
It's private property, so.
Okay. I didn't know since we issued it unsafe if there'd be any...
We've done other properties, Carlos is going to yell at me, I have to put the mic up. We've done other properties before where the city's gone and, and put up a snow fence and stuff like that to make people aware, put up signs that says the property's unsafe. We've done all that before, but the city doesn't care liability in that sense. Help me out then with this motion?
Well, would it, would it be best to pass this resolution and change the 30 days and put in 90 days? And then can they decide if they want to abate it then, or does it automatically go to abatement?
You, there's two options. You can just defer it until January 1 to revisit it then, because if, if you have a hard winter or it comes early or something, or Jeff can't get to it, obviously you don't want to set a hard, fast deadline of January 1, it sounds like, at least.
That was just to revisit.
Right. I mean, that's the option, or the other option is if you do want to set a hard deadline, then you just set it now, and if it's not done by then, then the city goes forward. But it sounds like you just want to defer it, is what the motion would be. Well, I personally do, and we'll see what happens with the vote. My, my recommendation then would be to motion to defer it till the first of the year. Knowing that in good faith, they're working on it, and, and the contractor is aware that they're going to be starting after harvest.
To the first meeting in January?
Could we just set a date in the spring rather than, I mean, if we review it in January, it's not done, it's just going to be a big waste of everybody's time.
Well, we, we might have a solid date by then. It might be in mid-construction. Again, we're revisiting it, we're not holding them, their feet to the fire, and it'd just be an agenda item. I mean, it, I, I wouldn't want to push it out to spring, let me put it that way.
No.
So, Jack, the intent would be that if weather permits and contractor permits, to take it down as soon as possible after harvest?
Yep.
Yeah, except on after the 20th, yeah.
Well, I would certainly, from my feedback, be opposed to putting any type of 30-day stipulation now they're getting into harvest, and that would interrupt business functions, and I'm open to considering, you know, a deferment.
So, yeah, I guess my motion would be defer it till the first meeting of 2018.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, same sign. Thanks, Matt. Item, oh, where do we go to here? Report from Shelby Cronin, Administrator of Hamilton County Public Health. Good evening, Shelby.
Good evening, thank you. I'm Shelby Cronin, I'm the Administrator of Hamilton County Public Health, and I want to take this first moment to thank the board, the council, and Daniel, to, for your interest in this topic. This, I'm going to start with a little bit of background. The Iowa Youth Survey is completed every other year and is offered to sixth, eighth, and 11th grade students across the state of Iowa. This survey started in 1997, or, sorry, in 1987, and then it had a rewrite in 1999. It's a 182-page document, and it asks a series of questions dealing with students' perceptions, their behaviors, and their, and their reflections on different topics. What was alarming to the Health Department this year was some of the mental health data that was, that came out of this survey. One of my jobs at the Health Department is to, is to analyze and collect data on our county and then interpret it. So, a group of us got together and looked at it, and the first thing that popped out to us was the whole section on mental health. Started off kind of small with the question that says, how often does the, in the past 30 days, do you feel nervous? And I'm sorry, my printout is a little dark, but for the 11th grade females, 24% of them said that they felt nervous. And then it, what goes on to ask, during the last 12 months, did you feel sad, hopeless, almost every day for two weeks or more that stopped you from doing usual activities? Again, we saw a spike in our 8th grade females, 34%, as compared to the state's 23%. And for the 11th grade females, we saw 37% of them had this feeling of hopelessness that decreased their activities, their normal activities. The one that popped out to me today was, I feel I do not have much to be proud of. This is a sad comment that students had to answer. But if you look at that, I strongly agree, and I agree with this, we're well over 30% for the female 11th grade girls, and we're over 40%, 44% exactly for 11th grade males. We all know that when students feel hopeless and they don't feel they're doing much right, that we can equate the, the opportunity of suicide or the thoughts of suicide will increase. So, one of the questions they do ask also says, during the past 12 months, have you seriously thought about killing yourself? 33% of our 11th grade females had thought about that. That's one in three girls in 11th grade have thought about ending their lives. In 8th grade, it's one in four, or 24% of our youth feel suicidal. When we looked at this data as Power of Youth and on the Mental Health Advisory Board Committee that I work with, we were quite shocked. These are significant increases from the year, the two years before. And we tried to come up with what's going on in our community, that we have students feeling hopeless, anxious, nervous, not feeling like they're doing anything to make their parents proud. And so, we, it also mirrored what we heard in our youth summit. The Power of Youth Group for the last 10, Coalition for the last 10 years, has had a youth summit, most importantly, probably the last five were very successful. And during those youth summits, we heard from students, especially last year, that they didn't feel connected, they needed more positive adult-youth interactions. And I was, we were so pleased out of that, that the Youth Advisory Council came out of that, because that is an opportunity for people, for youth to have voice and input into our community and give them a positive outcome. I presented this information to the Board of Supervisors, the Board of Health has seen this, the Mental Health Advisory Group has seen this data, and we are working on a couple of projects that we hope over time will help impact this data. We need to do more work to really find out the stories behind the data, because numbers are numbers. But we felt that this was, was a shocking increase in our community. One of the projects that we're looking at and working with the schools on is starting a mentor project. We're going to focus on Sunset Elementary, which is way younger than this, but we also know to affect, have long-term positive effect, we have to start somewhere. And so, that school has been identified as a school in need. We have not found funding yet, so we are trying to work on that aspect so that we can get this mentoring program up and off the ground. Questions about this data?
Just to start, thank you for bringing this to us and relaying it to the community. It's, it's, it's a gut check, you know, and, and it's a little bit overwhelming to see some of the, the high percentages and the really bad questions. So, thank you. Knowing what you do very naively, and, and how, you know, the Department of Public Health can, can impact these numbers, and maybe not knowing what the city council can do for you, do you have any ideas of how we can help with this in any way? I mean, again, I'm extremely naive to how the city can help this issue, and it's not an overnight issue.
No.
So, any ideas there?
This is a long-term issue. Our numbers were above the state average in the, in the prior years. They just took a straight, a very high trajectory in this last 2016 survey. I would like to say, don't be hopeless by looking at this, because there are two very committed groups that are working with this data, plus Community and Family Resources helps us with this data. YSS has got some counselors who now are within this school district. The other piece of this is I just get to see the county data, but the schools can actually request and get their specific school data. So, I'm hopeful that the school board is aware of this data as it pertains to South Hamilton or to Webster City schools. And hopefully, they are working through the school system also. I think the, the person who came to talk about bullying, because there's some bullying data that I'm not going to go over with you, that was in the survey, that prompted the all-school presentations, the things like that. I guess what, there's two things that we could ask the city council to think about. One is, just on a personal note, when you see a youth who is doing something good, give them a pat on the back. The statistics show us that if there's one caring adult outside of the family praising a, a student, that their risk of suicide, their risk of risky behaviors, drinking alcohol, going into drugs, reduces greatly with just one caring adult. So, if you think about, you know, more people in the community, if we were all out there looking for when kids are doing something good and we're saying, "Good job," that will have an impact. It'll have an immediate impact on that person, because you don't know what they're thinking tomorrow or the day before. So, that's a personal request. The second thing would be is if, if the council, sometimes when grants become available, we need a multi-collaboration. And not necessarily does it take money, but it might take some in-kind resources. So, as we move forward with Power of Youth Coalition and the Mental Health Advisory Board, there may be some grants that become available. We may come and ask you for your support, whether it's a letter of recommendation, letter of support, or in-kind of some sort. The Drug-Free Community Grant, which was the major funder of Power of Youth, ends on September 29th. So, that Coalition Director's job will be greatly reduced. She's still as passionate about youth and our community, so we'll continue to meet and do hold events, but the youth summit will be conducted by another organization this year. So, that could be something that maybe the city council could help us with in the future. We'll allow this other organization to do it this year, but if it doesn't bring us the same results as in previous years, we might need to take that back and do that. Other question?
Yeah, I have two. I'd mentioned this last council meeting, and I guess I refer back to Pat Powers. I was listening to his radio, and I heard his report on what you were saying about the suicides of teenagers. I don't have any young kids, I'm 72, and my granddaughter's 27, so that kind of gives you an idea of where I'm at. But it just kind of astounded me when I heard Pat, and that's why I was so interested in this. But the other thing that came out very strongly last week was the articles in the newspaper about the, from the sheriff, the police, and some providers about the alcohol-drug bullying situation. And this is more of a question. Do a lot of these correlate? I mean, if there's a lot of drug abuse, alcohol, and bullying, does that, I mean, that knocks down your self-worth.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's something, I guess, to be very honest, when we were interviewing for the Youth Advisory Committee, somebody mentioned bullying, and I said, "Well, why don't you pick a ball bat up and go after them?" And I found, I'm a whole different generation than a lot of these people, or it's not particularly correct, but, you know, sometimes kids got to learn to stand up for themselves. And, you know, that's one thing. And I think, you know, that's the way I look at it. But, you know, I'm just a person like that. But I do, as I say, I want to talk, I mean, compliment Pat, because that's where I heard about it, then compliment you folks and the other people. At least it's in the public now, but I don't think it's out enough.
Yep. We, I would totally agree with you. Sometimes when we see data like this, we don't know who, who needs to hear it. I'm thankful that you guys are willing to hear it, because we all have a small part that we can play. Like I said, just congratulating kids on doing a good job is a start. But it also gives a snapshot in time of, of our community, and we really need to dive deeper and see what is happening in our community and what, what can we do to help these youth that are feeling disengaged or...
Shelby, is there a correlation between, you know, they talk about the lack of the nuclear family, you know, mom, pop, and the kids is broken up, the kids aren't together for meals and things like that. And there's a lot of single-parent children and opposed to the nuclear family type. Is there a number difference between the kids coming from one parent, single-parent homes versus the nuclear family type of mom and pop in there? I mean, that's, I don't know if you have any...
Right. We do not have that data broken down, but we do, we do know that many, it takes a village to raise children nowadays, and it takes a large village. And every positive influence on a youth person benefits that child. The more positive adults around a child help lowers their risk of many risky behaviors, whether it's early onset of sex, drugs, alcohol, smoking, bullying.
Is this compiled every two years then?
This is compiled every two years. It's administered in the hall of the even years, and then it takes them almost, oh, a good year to get the data formatted into the report. Right now, I have three ISU interns working on this data for the Health Department, and they're going to model it so we can really maybe go back the last four and really see trends. The issue is that school districts can opt out. So, in 2014, both school districts in Hamilton County participated, and in 2016, both school districts participated. Prior to that, we had one that dropped out in the 2012, and then we had another one in the 2010, so it wasn't a real good cross-section of the schools, so.
The page you gave us has 2014, some comparisons.
At the bottom, yes.
All of them went up?
Yes.
And so, you're, one, one thing you're going to try to do to fix that is the mentoring program, correct? That's an idea anyway?
That is one idea that we've been working with through Power of Youth, and...
So, what kind of funding has to take place to make that happen? Just to get the word out.
We need to fund what we would call a mentor coordinator. We're thinking we can do that for about $25,000, a part-time person who would match students with interested adults. This, we're hoping that if we would get startup money for that, that the school district would take it over once they saw that it had, was having a positive impact. It's part of their PBIS philosophy that they adopted at the school system, it's Positive Behavioral Intervention. And so, there's a whole module about that, but the school has not been able to fund that position. But in our research through the, through the Power of Youth, we know that mentoring is very important for many children.
I have a question. How is this test administered? Is it like a, 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 with... Is it like a day, the one we always do? Basic skills where you just fill in the ovals and it's anonymous?
It is an anonymous test, and it has been validated, so, because the argument would be is that, "Oh, the kids in lower grade, they just sat down and filled in the ovals."
Well, that's what my thoughts are, because basic skills, that's what I did. And I know a lot of kids have done that. That's why I wondered if it's, you know...
This has had a lot of research attached to it, and they do not believe that people just fill in the dots. They feel that the way it's administered through the school, that kids are truthful. The other thing is because it is anonymous, some youth will be more apt to admit that they're feeling hopeless.
How long, how many questions? 182?
That's 182 pages.
And they do this in one city or...
I have not seen it administered.
Why do you think in the timeframe it would take you to do 182 pages of questions?
That's the report.
Oh, okay.
I think there's, but there are probably 150 questions. I mean, it's very extensive. It talks about families. It talks about your family life. Like I said, schools, peers, alcohol, tobacco use, bullying.
Yeah, I just wondered how, you know, length of time it would take you to do that kind of a test.
We have some students here that we know.
When the kids would get tired of doing it and then just... I've got 11th graders, so I'm going to ask you what you do.
Even if, even if they're doing that, the numbers are not something to not pay attention to.
Shelby, when I was in Nebraska, we had a mentoring program, and I'm looking it up right now, and I see they have chapters in Iowa. It didn't require a paid coordinator. They had a coordinator through the school that was actually a teacher that coordinated the partnerships between that, so I'm not sure if that's an option, but it was through teammates mentoring, so I'm not sure if that's an example to look at.
Right. That would be a great example. There's a mentoring program in Fort Dodge that we've looked at. We've looked at Big Brothers, Big Sisters formatting. We've looked at, we felt that the PBIS mentor program, because it already fit in with what the school was doing, was a good option, and we probably could do it with a volunteer coordinator. It's just finding the right person who would mesh up well with the school.
Do you present to the school board too? I mean, is this, are they looking at these numbers and wanting to do something about it?
They have not requested a presentation.
Can you suggest? Can you invite yourself?
Well, we can suggest.
Shelby, have you, have you got cooperation with the mentors?
Have we identified any mentors?
Yes.
Not at this point.
You've got a job ahead of you there.
I know.
And how will you find a student that needs that mentor?
We've had, we've had a mentoring program for I don't know how many years at the funeral home, and the kids come in, and what I, this is what I picked up from it, it was a chance to get out of school. There was really no interest. They just said they, they want, they were, it was a curiosity. There was, there was nothing that came to me in the whole building. This was five kids. I'm, I'm sort of negative on the, on the mentoring program because I know how it has to be changed around if it's going to work.
We have spent a number of hours with Youth and Shelter Services out of Ames, who runs mentoring programs in multiple school districts in Boone and Story County, and this project would be modeled after theirs. And there, right now, with this PBIS system in the school, children are identified early and interventions are started early to help them be successful in school. And part of this whole curriculum, you could have a whole presentation just on PBIS, but part of that is, the next level is a mentoring, and these children would be, wouldn't self-select in. They would be identified either by the behavioral specialist or the counselor or the principal. And the goal of this is to have positive adult interaction, and this mentoring program takes place during the school day on school property, so...
Well, I think as a council, we can, I mean, I know I can talk to some school board members and say, "You should come up, Shelby, talk and get this data." I don't know why they wouldn't want to know it.
Yeah, I don't think they're purposely not asking yet. Maybe they just weren't aware, you know, some of us weren't aware of this data, but, but there just, there are some newly elected members and the city. I'm sure we all in the room here know at least one of the city members are newly elected members, and let's reach out to them and get you in front of them.
Yep, thank you.
Great job relaying the data. Horrible data to look at, but great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shelby. Thanks for coming. All right, item three is an update report from the Youth Advisory Committee. You two got the short, short end of the bargain?
I'm Katie Greenfield. I'm a senior at the high school.
And I'm Brianna Louvett. I'm a junior at the high school, and I'm also the secretary for YSC.
This summer, as you guys know, we did our bucket list, and we had quite a few participants with that. We'd like to thank you guys for helping with that because it was a good project to get off to start with. We had a lot of fun with it.
And then, we were also looking at the next steps, what we would want to do in the community, and it was brought to our attention that we might want to do a winter fest, so that would like involve the businesses around Webster City, and we're just wondering if the city would be interested and like maybe seeing that happen around our town. So, we're thinking about maybe closing off a block, bringing in the tree lighting ceremony, like incorporate that a little bit more, but open it up more and get more participants throughout the community.
Yeah, so, our last meeting, this idea got floated, remember, and the Youth Advisory Commission just lit up with it. You guys just wanted to start digging in and, and plotting out ideas, and I suggested they come here tonight to, to bounce it off us first, you know? Wish you all could have been there to see the excitement on this one, but...
Who's a good idea was it?
And, and you're absolutely right, and Brianna brings a lot of outside-of-town knowledge, right? Because you moved here a couple of years ago, a year or two?
I moved here two years ago, and then before that, I've also been in other communities where my mom has worked, also on a city council. She was the city manager for multiple cities.
And in some of these communities, you've seen a winter festival event and the success that has followed with it. And, you know, last year, we did the tree lighting, and that was a good start, and it was a great community event, but what I think the Youth Advisory Commission is going to do is really grow that and make it an annual event. So, as you all know, they're an advisory committee to us, so I wanted to make sure they had direction from us, and this is something that we can greenlight.
I don't see anything wrong with Gallenford, let's be sure.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I have my idea of what it might be, but more details and a direction, but it seems like a good idea, something I would totally be on board with.
And what I'd also like the council to do is delegate a lot of that planning to the Youth Advisory Commission, to kind of let them run with some of the ideas, again, touching base with us on a regular cadence to make sure we're all on the same page and within budget, you know, things get nuts, but, I mean, that's what I'd like to see, and I think that's what the Youth Advisory Commission's requesting.
Would the goal be to put it together this year, yes?
Yes, maybe like start out like more small this like year, but like eventually throughout the years, make it more annual thing and grow, so like we can also get like the businesses around Webster City to maybe join in, like maybe ask Hy-Vee to like maybe donate some hot chocolate, and we can just have little stands around or just get more participation throughout the community, and this would also bring like, if we had enough snow, maybe like a snowman building contest and get more kids involved and get more people outside, because I know in winter, a lot of people like to stay more inside because it's warm, but if we have like more participation throughout the whole community, it could really unlie in and like range out the season more.
Another one of the ideas that was bouncing around in the last commission meeting is possibly a, a winter-themed movie at the theater during this event, right? You know, so to kind of warm up towards the end of the evening, the community files in and watches a winter-themed movie. But again, they're just, I mean, iceberg would be, you know, relevant, right? It's iceberg. They're just, it's just the tip of the iceberg here, and there's a lot more to it. Again, I just wanted to make sure City Council was on board with the commission's direction.
Does the commission want to work this year with the Chamber of Commerce since they have their Christmas in the City scheduled already for...
To help each other?
Yeah, I know for, I mean, speaking of the Chamber Board, I know that we would be more than willing to...
I was going to suggest or ask.
Because we already have the free movie at the theater, Hocko from Hy-Vee, the tree lighting, Santa's coming again, businesses and all that. I mean, it's a perfect opportunity for the, the youth and the Chamber of Commerce to work together on that one.
Linda Christensen was supposed to be here at the last council meeting. I know she's planning to be here October 2nd, so I don't know if that year group and Linda can kind of pow-wow, and she can include that in her report at the next meeting.
And there's the funding source too, because we already have a budgeted item for it, so...
Very good. So, would that be a direction to council, let it collaborate with the Chamber?
Seems logical, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it seems they're already doing something, and it, you know, that what they've done in the past hasn't been real big, whereas maybe you could get it.
That's right.
Get some momentum beyond for us, but...
Yeah, and the Youth Advisory Commission, as we recall, one of their duties is to represent the youth and then also bring community activities to the youth. And I think their network, if you will, isn't usually at a lot of these community events, and if they can bring their network with them while they collaborate with the Chamber on it, I think it'll grow like weeds.
There were three of us up here last year who climbed on trees and decorated them with Christmas lights. That might be a good competition for some younger, young blood in the community to do this year.
We're going to have a lottery. I'm going to receive a top one.
All right.
The ladder?
I was thinking I would hold the ladder.
All right, yeah.
Very good.
Thanks very much.
Good job.
Good job. Item four is a recommend approval of a, for issuance of a beer and liquor licenses by the Iowa Department of Commerce for the following. A, renewal of Class C liquor license, outdoor sales and Sunday sales at CNC American Tap, 522, 526, Second Street. And item B is renewal of a Class C liquor license, outdoor service and Sunday sales for Carpe's Biker Bar at 732 Second Street.
I wanted to say something quick, guys. Probably ask me if we just blindly vote these liquor sales licenses to, without any background. The police department does keep an eye on their record, make sure they qualify. All that stuff is checked before it gets...
They don't reach our desk until the state approves them, correct?
I, the process is when, when I get the renewal, I check with the police department, get an okay from Shiloh, I check with the fire department. They have to do an inspection every year. Sometimes they go once and there's some issues they have to resolve, and then they'll let me know when they've resolved them. Council has to approve it, and then they pay their, the property, the business owner pays the fee, and then I go on and endorse it when all of those things have occurred.
When you file for a new one, though, does it have to go through the state first and then it comes?
Well, everything goes to the state, but the city has the final authority.
Right. But it's been checked by the state before it reaches our agenda.
I know in the past with different organizations, but I know private bars, it used to be felons couldn't own a bar, and they were pretty good about checking things out, so I do, I, you know, concur with what you're saying, Carol. You know, the police do a good job of checking these out, you know, to confirm questions Brian had, that they do a good job, and we just got it checked out pretty well.
And I know, there have been instances where if an establishment has, if the police department's been called there several times within a certain timeframe, we will accept it on a temporary basis and then give them a renewal at the end of that if there's no, hasn't been any infractions or anything, or any other issues, so...
Go for the motion.
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion approved. Item five on the agenda is a resolution approving the official financial report for City Streets.
This is an annual report that the city has to prepare every year after conclusion or ending their fiscal year, which for our fiscal year ends the end of June. This is a report that outlines the use of funds that the city receives from the state, road use tax funds, needs to be prepared and submitted to the state by the end, the end of September. This includes both for street projects that encompass both labor, public and private contracts, reconstruction or reconstruction, overall improvement projects to the city's municipal street system, equipment, storm sewer, pretty much anything that probably falls to the repair and maintenance of our street improvements. So, Doty prepares this report. She's outlined in the memo and includes the projects that we have taken on last fiscal year and equipment and labor that's involved with the overall maintenance of the street department, so if you have any specific questions, we can answer.
It's a fairly involved report. I don't know whether to pick anything specific out to, to talk about.
Move to approve.
Sorry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion approved. Item six is a motion on memo of understanding between the City of Webster City and the International Union of Operating Engineers, Local Number 234. Andrew, you want to...
Sure. Earlier this year, roughly springtime, the city was approached by the National Union of Operating Engineers that represents our linemen, our public works, our, some of our cemetery, and our water and wastewater crews. Over time, we've found, and the union brought this to the table of realizing that in terms of our line department, our wages had remained, had not kept up with competition in other, in other, both electric municipalities as well as rural electric cooperatives. It grew to the extent that we were vastly under-competitive with other, other regions and entities, and it hadn't been brought up as part of the past union negotiations whenever the union agreement was renewed, and it really came to a head as we were starting to see a number of our employees being recruited and poached by other entities. And it becomes a problem for us as a city in that we spent time and effort in training and developing some of our alignment, wanting to see them move on to other entities, and then we have to reinvest additional resources to replace them. We've reached an agreement with the union to rectify the compensation for our lineman positions in order to bring them into a, in order for us to be a little more competitive. We've researched surveys that were conducted both by other municipalities as well as, I think, one that was sponsored by the Iowa Utility Board, if I'm not mistaken, to see comparison of where we're at. We did also, as part of this process, look at where we were at in terms of benefits, both in terms of insurance as well as things such as time off and other benefits that are encompassed in that. And so, we present you the memorandum of understanding between us and the union. We feel it's a step in the right direction to start getting us more in line with where things are at competitively. Otherwise, the recourse would be to start seeing more and more of our guys perhaps be poached or try to be recruited by other entities and see them leave to the detriment of our, of our line department. So, these are guys that are up, both not just in the bucket, but climbing on utility poles. Just this week alone, as Adam, the department supervisor, alluded to, we spent about 18 hours this past weekend dealing with calls and issues related to our electric line due to outages or things of that sort. So, there's, that's part of the benefit of having a line department that's local and that are readily available to respond to outages and issues that arise, as opposed to being reliant on a larger entity that has a much larger geographic region to respond to.
We discussed this a little bit in a work session a while back, and I, at the time, the council consensus was on this path, and nothing has changed. and nothing has changed, uh, data-wise since then, correct?
Correct.
That's, I mean, it's time that, time that they were caught up, that's for sure.
Yeah, I, I concur with your, with your statements in your memo and your, and your statements just made. We, we have to stay competitive, uh, and sometimes it takes a shot at the system to get caught back up to that competitive level. So I, I think it's warranted.
I agree.
Yeah, I hope it goes without saying, we appreciate everything you guys do and...
Yeah, we do get good service from you fellas, that's for sure. We get a quick response.
Hopefully this change helps keep you guys around.
Yeah, we'd rather you stay in town. We do like having yous around.
Now, do you need? Call for a motion?
Move to approve, second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion approved. Item seven is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a 28E agreement with Hamilton County, Iowa for the joint Beach Street Improvement Project. Daniel?
Guess when I'll let Ken take over, he was more involved with the details with the county on developing the agreement language. We've talked about this in the past few council sessions as we've kind of ramped up our, our project for Beach Street and resurfacing that, so.
Uh, I guess at this point I would entertain, uh, any questions, but before that, I would like to, uh, thank, um, Nikki Stein, the county attorney, or county attorney, I saw Pam Chambers as a county attorney, uh, county engineer, and, uh, thank, uh, our city attorney for the work that they did on this, uh, 28E agreement. I guess as I outlined on the memo, if, uh, you choose not to go this route, it's gonna make us very difficult, uh, the county and ourselves to get this project completed. DOT will not look favorably upon us not doing this. So I think that will greatly impact, uh, that agreement that we have signed already with the DOT and the county. So I guess at this point, um, if you have any questions, we weren't happy to answer them.
Just one, who's the overall engineering charge? Would that be the state, the county or...?
Well, um, the county, the county engineer is the one that was given the task to design and run the project. She is the lead on the project and that was determined by the DOT.
Okay, so you got one person in charge.
One person is in charge.
But the county and the city.
Correct, and if there's an issue that arises that is under city jurisdiction, she'll defer that decision to us.
No, it's just that...
I mean, if, you know, because down Beach Street, you do have, you are split. You've got county, you've got city. If there's a piece that is a city question, she will contact me and bring that question to my attention and then we'll go from there and resolve it.
You folks have worked with them in the past, so...
Yes.
Okay, no, that's answering my question. Thank you.
It only makes sense to, to work with the county and get the, get the best, uh, best we can for what we got going on, so. Best way to spend our money, yes, for sure.
Yes, I mean, uh, we couldn't, we couldn't get this project completed for what we are gonna get it completed for if we didn't do it jointly.
Move to approve.
Thanks, Ken.
Second.
All those in favor? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion approved. Item eight is a first reading of opposed ordinance and ordinance amending the code of ordinances for the City of Webster City, Iowa, 1996 by adding paragraph thirty-three to chapter sixty-five, section zero-two, providing addition of a stop sign on Fair Meadow Drive. This is Fair Meadow Drive and Beach Street, cause I had someone call me today and wanted to know which part of Fair Meadow Drive. Since we do have two temporary signs on there at the moment that is not posed at this stage. That's actually going to the traffic committee in October, isn't it?
Correct.
I think someone was asking me about that today, so.
By the way, before, since it was brought up, uh, before we addressed this one, um, I was asked to actually pass on a big thank you to city staff and, and council for, uh, placing those temporary signs. Uh, in the meantime, uh, from some of the neighborhood residents, um, they had a lot of concerns about the safety of their children as soon as that road got opened up to beach. So, uh, you know, there being a park there and it, uh, up till just about three weeks ago being a very low travel road unless you lived out there. So I appreciate that greatly, Daniel, for you guys getting them placed. On this one, is Ken gonna, Ken seems like he's ready to go.
Again, uh, this is at, um, as you are obviously westbound on Fair Meadow at Beach Street. Uh, this authorizes this, um, stop sign at that location and at that location only, as the mayor mentioned. This has gone through the traffic committee. The traffic committee did approve this and that's why it's now to you and ordinance form.
Yeah, it's a no, you know, it's a no-brainer.
Yeah. Um, again, before we vote, again, I, this is a no-brainer as well, but while we're on the topic, has there been discussion about the speed limits along Beach Street, uh, coming to that stop sign from the south? How, how the, you know, coming to town, they, they step down?
Uh, the last, uh, traffic committee meeting, they did discuss that and that will probably be to you, uh, in October. Uh, some of the issues that we get involved with, uh, we can stop them or stop them. We can slow them down on R twenty-seven as shown here, which is, um, Beach Street. But, uh, as you get, as you are northbound, coming into town, we can slow them down. But as we go southbound, you are inside the city limit, or outside the city limits. And so I need to be in conversation with, uh, the county engineer and try to resolve how to slow them down or kind of match that speed limit. The traffic committee did talk, uh, a little bit about slowing them down and, uh, so you'll see a recommendation to you on November second and it'll probably start, uh, south of Highway twenty and step them down as we come northbound.
No, good, good. One, one thing I've noticed in others is you kind of come over that, there's like, almost like a hump, right, right where that, where Fair Meadow jumps on the beach and it's a little bit blind to the, the newcomer, so, good.
Yeah, it, it, it is, it is and it isn't because it's not marked as a no passing zone. So you can see.
Sure.
It's a possibility.
Sure.
But I understand.
No, very, you know, it sounds like you're on it and appropriate steps are being taken, so I appreciate it.
Thanks, Ken.
Move to approve.
Would it remain into a no passing?
It's not, uh, the, the problem is it's not our entire jurisdiction, so.
I can see where it could be, yes.
I mean, it's a blind spot, isn't it?
It could be a no passing zone.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Same sign. Motion approved. Item nine is a motion on request from the Public Works Director to seek bids for a greater wing for the street department. Ken, will you, uh, you might as well stay there for a while.
I think, uh, in the memo, uh, you saw the picture of the, on the specifications of the greater with the wing on it. Street Department Superintendent Lanny and myself and, um, Daniel, I've had several conversations about how in the world do we clean that eastbound lane and get rid of that snow? Because our issue is, we can put the snow up on what is called a parking, which is between the curb and that sidewalk. There's about eight feet of hopefully grass at some point, but you have dirt there. And so we move, we put, we can push the snow up on that, but our problem is, as you saw from last winter, we have this freeze thaw and everything that thaws flows north across that street. Well, uh, obviously you know what happens when we, during the day it thaws, at night it freezes and so now we got a slick scenario. So we've been trying to come up with a scenario to resolve that and what we've come up with is not only can we use this wing to push that snow further and just to get it up on, pretty much up on that sidewalk and then take a snowplow of sorts and push it off further to the south and get rid of it totally. Now, we won't be able to, uh, get it right down to the, to the grass because we feel if we do, we're gonna tear up the grass and so there's probably gonna be a little bit of snow left. And we're thinking, you know, our goal is to get it down to within two inches. And hopefully we can, we've figured out a way to accomplish that. Uh, one of the other reasons why we went with this, um, wing is we can use that, um, in other locations, along Miller's Lane, some of the other streets that we have that are in outlying areas where we need to push the snow back away from the street so we can, you know, don't have to keep coming by there every day that it snows. And again, uh, as you can see from the memo, we have looked at, uh, just about everything we could think of. If someone's got a better idea or a different idea, well, I'm, I'm sure up for it, so.
No, I'm glad you're addressing this issue, cause that, that was a concern last winter. Uh, a lot of, a lot of criticism was given to the road design because that, you know, and I think this is a way around that, um, to handle that snow.
In term, in terms of cost or, or paying for this, we kind of talked about that and just like SUGS has just approved the SFR report on street, um, funds, this would be a, a perfect piece of equipment that's, uh, used for such, uh, such street funds.
How many ever says how much it is?
Well, the motion was to go out and seek bids. If they're under twenty-five thousand, then, then permit the, permit Ken and Street Department to buy it.
I'll move to approve. Oh, sorry, there's more questions.
Question, is there any chance to just haul that snow away? Cause if you just push it up the hill, it's still gonna end up...
We're, we're talking about, you know, we looked at the, uh, option of, um, windrowing it like we do Second Street.
With the blower?
With a, with a blower. Uh, we don't have the time to do that. You, we, I mean, we start early enough in the morning and we barely can get it done during the day to take all that snow and, and get it someplace. I know someone, or you were thinking about, okay, how about just blowing that lane? Well, you can't, um, you can't take a blower out there and you, yeah, you maybe you could blow it to the south, but you have residents there that you really don't want to blow that snow into that house or that vehicle and the same thing would be to the north. You don't want to blow it across a lane, cause if you had oncoming traffic and you don't know what's in that snow, there could be a rock, it could be a brick, it could be a fender. We got, you know, we talked about all kinds of things that could happen, so. Like I said, this was our...
I think you'll find...
Most cost-effective option that we came up with.
I think you'll find it'll be useful. Um, you're probably, what you're gonna end up with is probably still yet to be seen. I guess, but at least this will give you options. Cause if you try it this way this year and it doesn't work out, I guess we can try it a different way, but...
And our biggest, our biggest concern was trying to get that so that we, um, can keep that two inches, you know, of snow still there without tearing up the grass with that wing. And I think we've got to figure out how we can do that.
Who gets to run it? That's the question.
Well, whoever runs that greater, right? Yes, it is. Unfortunately, you know, here's the other thing. There's not a lot of obstacles in that eastbound lane on the south side. There's a couple, you know, speed limit signs, a couple mailboxes. Basically, that's, that's it, which helps.
Ken?
I think my motion's still out there. It's technically moved, I think.
What's the recourse for the driveways that are there and then you fill it up with a humongous pile and all the snow? It's a lane's worth and a path's worth and like Pat Powers has been have dragged up to his driveway. Who, who goes back and helps him clean up?
I, I heard Pat just bought a brand-new snow shovel, so he's good. Um, it, no, that's a good question and once we move this snow, um, off that street and basically off that eight-foot of parking, it's gonna land on that sidewalk. We're gonna have to push that, we're gonna have to take a, uh, pickup with a blade on it and we're gonna have to push that snow off of that sidewalk yet too and, um...
Then are you gonna push that south?
Yes, we gotta push it south. We don't want to push it back north again.
So now you've got more of that hill to melt down.
Well, it should melt here in the ditch and so it's going down that ditch to a waterway.
So we do have some ditches to the south, but obviously not at this end, but, yeah.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion approved. Item ten is a motion on request from, uh, Police Chief to purchase a 2018 Chevrolet Tahoe, police vehicle using the state bid program.
Did you wanna throw a... Sure. Shiloh wasn't able to be here tonight. He's feeling a little bit under the weather. But he and I kind of talked about, um, moving forward with purchasing his vehicle. Initially after the council's discussion about, uh, trying to buy local whenever possible. We did reach out to Webster City Auto about, uh, purchasing our police Tahoe from them. The caveat being, as we've done in the past with police vehicles, is make sure that when you purchase them, there's trade-in value as well as the, the dealer ensures that all the available equipment, um, can be transferred from one unit to the other. They're speaking with, uh, some folks out there. Uh, it wasn't something that they felt they could do at this time, so we wanted to go ahead and bring this back and, and, uh, request to move forward with buying our police Tahoe from, uh, Carle Chevrolet. They do have an in-house, um, service department that transfers all of the equipment. That includes the sirens, the lights, the radio equipment and all that, um, and, and warranties their work. And should any issues arise, um, they come up and, uh, either try to fix the issues up here or tow it back down to their dealership to do. Uh, we also wanted to replace the 2015 Tahoe while it still has some trade-in value. It's pushing seventy thousand miles, starting to show some issues with, uh, burning oil, um, over time. So we wanted to make sure we try to replace that while we have the value, uh, for that vehicle. Total price for the Tahoe will be forty-eight thousand, three thousand, forty-eight thousand, three hundred ninety-five. This includes a vehicle cost of three, thirty-six thousand, three hundred ninety-five as well as decal-ing, equipment repair, equipment replacement and installation of the existing equipment onto the new vehicle. Also the purchase of a new radio, um, for the, for the vehicle of twelve thousand dollars. We're receiving a trade-in allowance of twenty-three thousand, two hundred eighty-five for the 2015 Tahoe. Um, this will make the total purchase for this 2018 Tahoe, um, twenty-five thousand, one hundred and ten.
I'd, I'd like to thank you for first, first reaching out locally. I'm glad we're, we're doing that now, but, uh, I, I think you're right. And if they decline being able to do what we're asking and, uh, some of the services are, I'm sure somewhat, um, traded or, you know, to trade in a sense to install some of this equipment, I, I could see it's not within their scope, but I appreciate each note.
Anyone else have any?
I move to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion approved. Item eleven is a motion on planning and zoning commission minutes of September eleventh, 2017. Call for a motion? All for motion?
Still move. Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Item twelve on the agenda is a resolution setting a time and place for a public hearing on the proposed use of property located at seventeen hundred Second Street, Webster City, Iowa, for October two at five forty-five P M.
Sure, I think this is the request from Quick Star and their, their.
No, no.
Oh, sorry. You're on one. Initially, when, when Verablu purchased the Bean building, they had plans to, uh, do processing out the Bean building as well as conjunction serve for their corporate headquarters. Um, and use the spec building for some of their R and D and their nursery functions. Um, they've now decided, requested to do, switch those two functions and do, um, uh, the, some of the R and D and nursery, um, out at the Bean building. The P and Z reviewed the, the request and didn't have any issues with it being out there. I think the building is already zoned M two, so any use requires council approval before they can move forward with. I know they have a, other number of projects, number of plans in the works for, for all their sites in mind. That being the Bean building, the chemical building, as well as the spec building. Uh, and some other ground they're looking to acquire and develop for, for their, their operations and purposes. So, uh, there will probably be future requests coming to the council and the P and Z board as well.
Vote to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
I have a question about this Verablu. What seems to be going on? It seems like I'm hearing a lot of anecdotal comments that, uh, they're having some issues that they would like get resolved. And then we had to deal on the lots that were supposed to get started for construction. And that was supposedly tied in with them. What, what's going on with Verablu?
I guess, I guess first your, to your question about the lots, uh, those are understanding that Verablu, um, is now considering doing residential development directly under Verablu's umbrella as opposed to in partnership with a, with a third party, um, developer or, or real estate firm. Um, there, that's still coming up to fruition. I haven't heard in concrete plans. I understood at some of the other lots around town that they've, um, have agreements with. Uh, we're going to be, um, what I understand bundled and sold to Verablu or transferred to Verablu in some fashion. I'm not sure what their timeline, um, is for that and they haven't indicated such. In terms of their overall plans of what Verablu has in mind, I know they, they have a, just, they're trying to get their ducks in a row to figure out what their long-term, what I would consider to be their, their facility plans in order. Uh, you, you see that both with construction going on north of the chemical building. They were recently approved by the Board of Adjustments for, um, to, for some setback issues to permit them to construct another building, um, within the setbacks that are usually not permitted. Um, so they want to build a building closer to the sidewalk than was on the north side that was typically used. Um, they also have some other plans, um, for the spec building, um, and potentially either expand that building or construct another building on site. Um, and so they're going through the process of figuring out what they're hoping to look like in the future. As well as the bigger question for us is going to be, um, what their wastewater needs are going to be and how they're gonna impact us. The latest we've heard from them is they're looking at options where they can, um, reduce, um, almost the entirety of their wastewater discharge to us and dispose of it in some other fashion. I understand that they have, uh, the notion or trying to move in a direction of trying to be environmentally sustainably friendly as best as possible. So they're looking at a couple of options where, um, they may not have to discharge to the city if at all possible. You know, when we, when we met with them recently, you know, certainly the question came up of, well, how soon are they gonna be able to have an answer, um, to that question? Cause obviously we need to move forward with our wastewater plant, um, to meet our, our requirements with the D N R. Um, and so they're, they're working through that as diligently as possible. And we're hoping to get a response back in confirmation to us, um, by this week, um, if possible. So that's kind of where they're at. Um, I know.
On those three lots, so they have not fulfilled their obligation.
On, on the three lots that were sold to Ted Ray and Shuna Realty, um, no, they, they, Mr. Ray didn't fulfill his obligation to close on September first. Um, we're waiting, we've been in contact with Verablu and Mr. Ray's attorney to recoup those, uh, those deeds back. Those are understanding that they were to be coming back Friday or today and we have not heard from that yet.
Then follow up on that, uh, then Luke's had requested by that property. Are we gonna make an effort to go back and try to sell that property to them? Because I remember our argument several months ago, you know, we're gonna sell three lots. We had this commit, firm commitment from Luke's to buy that lot and we left them hanging. And so now I guess my question is for the city and the city council to go back, are we gonna let him have an option to buy that again? Are we gonna get, play the yo-yo game with Verablu?
The conversation I remember having with Luke's was if this didn't come fruition, worst case scenario, they'd, he'd get another shot at, which is where we're at.
That's what I'm saying, did somebody go back with them?
I mean, do. So this is, so just to be clear, these are not gonna be offered to the in-house Verablu Land Development Group if, if we do get these deeds back?
I would assume, I guess for, for where Zach and I stood, the, the, I guess the immediate priority was getting the deeds back and then bringing back to council at, at the next meeting. Um, so you guys can decide what direction you guys want to head with that.
Right, yeah, I think that's the first step. And then the rest of the conversation can be had at that point in time.
I guess my question is, I'm, I'm not a real estate person, but how did they get the leads before they closed?
Uh, it was, it was purely an inadvertent error on, I mean, that nobody's fault. It's, what happens is after council meetings, a packet of stuff gets approved and then gets sent out to be recorded. And just mistakenly those ones ended up in the pile, I guess, is the best answer I can give you. Other than we got, I, I was made aware of it on Friday that when they came back and I said, whoa, whoa, how'd these get recorded? And, uh, immediately got in contact with their, their attorney and said, you know, obviously this was done in error. Wasn't the intention of the city staff or anybody to, to record them. It was just, I think they just.
So they were not recorded, they were not recorded to county?
They were recorded with the county, yeah, that's what I mean.
Um, we don't go down this rabbit hole necessarily right now, just, um.
Yeah, it's, it's happened for Luke's to come back.
Good, I, I'm glad that, that's happening. Um, you know, the, uh, do you think the reason they didn't fulfill what we laid in front of them about putting a basement in within six months is because of their change of direction of land development or because of change of heart of the parties involved?
The conversation I've had with their attorney was just timing, that they could not, being from Texas and stuff, they didn't realize how hard our winters can get sometimes. And getting it lined up with contractors, uh, it's purely a timing thing is what they believe. Again, this is all premature conversation because the, the, you know, we were supposed to close on September one and, and that's when we found out that these deeds had been recorded. And so immediately the conversation with them was, let's get this back. And then, uh, that's when they brought it to our attention. And that was another issue that they, the timing wise. And so, uh, at least the direction we've been given is to get these deeds back. So that's what we're working on now, so.
And, and, and parallel to that, I think somebody from maybe the city should be reaching out to the Luke's, making aware of where we're at.
Well, that's what I suggested, yeah, but I mean.
But we don't have the deeds yet, so nobody.
Well, do we have a time, well, see if they're interested. We have a timeline when we're gonna get those back from the county?
We don't have the deed yet, but we're, we're getting them back, correct? So it's, it's, that's why I say in parallel too. We need to make them aware so they have proper time to get their finances in order to possibly purchase these. Unless we put them up again and for some reason they're not financially ready or they weren't made aware and, and they need it, they, we don't want to have this act a little late thing again. Or the Barrow Blue Development Company comes in and makes an offer and now we got another bidding war. I want to have the Luke's there and teed up, ready to go because we owe them that.
We already told them.
They do, they're aware.
Well, we told them at that meeting that night.
Like since, since we have not contacted.
What I'm saying is I don't know if they're aware, I would like someone from the city staff to make them aware.
That's what I would like.
Fair enough.
Do we have a suspend date though, when we're gonna get those back from the county, I guess?
We, we, we got the, the ones that were recorded in air back already. That's how I became aware, is I didn't, I didn't send them out there, I just got them back and it was.
Okay, so we do have them back on our.
We have the originals, but, but we're now having to get a quickly indeed back from the, now them back to the city to put it back in possession of the city.
Messy.
Yeah.
Hang on, where are we at on this?
I would like to do the vote again because we had a motion by Miller, second by McKinney to approve the resolution to set the time and place. But then we voted that Jim had another question, so we just need to do the vote again.
Yeah.
So the public hearing would be set.
For the public hearing, this is setting the public hearing on October second at five forty-five P M. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion approved. Item thirteen is a motion on request for completion of second segment of Brewer Creek Trail from Brewer Creek Bridge to Beach Street Parking Lot. And adopt the resolution authorizing agreement for the surfacing of Brewer Creek Trail Extension Project with Fort Dodge Asphalt Company for Fort Dodge, Iowa. Dan, do you want to share a question?
Bring it up if I can. Council had requested for staff to bring back information on completing the second segment of the trail. It would essentially be from the Beach Street Brewer Creek Bridge, um, to the Beach Street Brewer Creek Parking Lot. You can see by the quotes, uh, we went out and we got quotes on what it will cost to do asphalt and got two quotes for, for concrete. Uh, you can see that the quote for asphalt, um, is about half the cost of what concrete would be. Um, one of the big differences between, um, construction of this segment versus the first segment, um, was that the first segment was all concrete. It also was designed to, it will support, um, our utility vehicles since we have electric utility easement underground, that the path was paralleling. Um, in this case, um, being it is more of a, of a, probably consider a basic, um, trail, um, with minimal vehicle usage. Um, we're able to, uh, find some savings as well as, uh, do a good portion of the work, uh, ourselves by our street departments, um, that have been pulling trees and, and clearing the path that this would follow, um, in preparation of whether it be now or in spring, um, being able to just come through and, and lay that asphalt down.
Yeah, it looks good. I see they've been clearing it. Can you pull up the map? You, you have attached to your memo?
Map and memo?
The map of the actual trail, the, the, there like a red pencil line, I believe in there, so. Um, and this would be to directly address the safety concern and assumption brought by Mr. Loveless to us last month about the trail being, uh, unsafe along Beach Street.
Put a trial down, you're aware in a trial.
Uh, and I, I say that kind of loaded, right? This is, this is addressing, the trail is not go along Beach Street except for the barricaded pedestrian bridge over the Brewer Creek area located there just to the south. Yep. And that, that line is what's actually been cleared out right now, that the, the clearing.
I think they've been halfway down it, yeah. Yeah, halfway down, yeah.
Nice.
I think the rain would have stopped a bit.
Barra Meadow would be down to the south about another three hundred feet or so? Yeah. Very, yeah.
Barra Meadow's where this pin is.
There's the bridge right where that blue line comes in. Yeah, yeah, it's that light pavement there.
It's a great thing.
Now you can walk to it.
Had a pedestrian bridge already on it.
Bridge, you know it.
So that we reuse it, right? Without making a new one.
With the, with the site defense and everything, I mean, it's amazing that they spent all that money. There you go, they knew we were coming.
No, I'm excited about this. It, it looks like, uh.
Yeah, it's still be going about spending money.
Well, some of the, yeah, if you look at some of the bids up here, you know, we're, we're actually going with the cheaper option to go asphalt, which, which most of the Brewer Creek Trail is anyway. Um, so it makes sense, it matched the rest of it, um.
That's smart.
We're also getting, as in the next section, you'll see that we're actually getting some other work done that's tying in with it, that's helping us with that too, so.
Does asphalt last, last time?
Yes, yes, it does.
And that asphalt's easier for us, um, where you don't have the vehicle usage, it's easier to patch versus concrete where you're then having to cut it out and record. It becomes a much more costly repair, so, um, but yeah, the existing Brewer Creek, most of them, it's all the way is asphalt, yeah. Now, the total project, even though the asphalt is shy of sixteen thousand, um, we're, we're still working through the, um, the overall cost in construction. So we, we don't think there's gonna be any additional cost. We want to just include, ensure that, um, up to thirty thousand, but we're probably even far below that in terms of the overall construction cost for this segment, yeah.
I'll move to approve the recommendation.
I know I have a concern because I've been driving by there virtually every day for a long time. And last week I saw a couple of work fellows were down there clearing that out. So they pretty much got trail cut through except the tiny end of the road. But Saf Newman was driving by, they got a big pile of gravel down there. So I think somebody's been presumptuous that it was gonna get approved and I, but I suppose it's already been discussed, so that's my concern where.
This is just for the asphalt, the part that the trial was already gonna go in.
I don't even remember we voted on that. I know we talked about it.
Well, if we, uh, we put the other part of the trial in, so we're always gonna go in.
I know, we talked about then the other, then tying this was gonna be a later date. So I'm assuming this is the later date.
Well, now that, well, this is the light that for the.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
We had complaints about, about whether it got sealed or not, but we could, we could do the dirt trail ourselves with our own council crew.
I see your point though, Jim. I, I think we're, we kind of, at the end of that con, that conversation, we kind of had a council consensus to, okay, if you have a safety concern, let's just, let's just finish off this trail. So there's no, uh, you know, accusations of this trail that goes to a busy highway and so. And in order to address those, I, I, you know, we got on it right away. And that, true, there was never an official vote, but there was council consensus and direction I think for the city to start.
Certainly done as well, privy to it, so.
I'll move to approve. Okay.
Second, I'll second.
Um, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
Aye.
Motion approved. Item fourteen is a motion on request to approve extending quantities to include designated roads in Graceland Cemetery with the aforementioned agreement with Fort Dodge Asphalt Company.
Sure, um, in the past, at the cemetery, um, where most, almost all the roads, um, are asphalt with the exception of a few dirt roads. Um, we've tried to replace those dirt roads with asphalt as we've had other asphalt projects in town. Uh, we've set aside ten thousand dollars in each fiscal year, um, with us moving forward with this project and it being awarded to the asphalt contractor. Um, we would like to extend the quantity so that we can use a budget of funds in a cemetery to add additional, um, roads, um, that are currently just dirt roads. I believe they're primarily in the west side of the cemetery, if I'm not mistaken. There's a map, um, included in your packet that shows the highlighted portions that would be, um, filled in with the asphalt, if I'm not mistaken.
Anyone have any questions?
I like to see more of it get filled in and that's great.
No, I do have a question to ask Mr. Hart. Uh, when we get into this, I know we're doing the asphalt up there, but over the years I used to walk through there, many years I used to run, but that's a long time ago. And, you know, a lot of those, it kind of, you know, the gravel roads exposed out, you know, made into grave sites. Uh, I mean, do you have a, I mean, I'm not saying, you know, is this something that's like a ten-year road, fifteen-year road or some, you know, for planning?
For planning of how much we're gonna do?
No, 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 we're putting the asphalt on gravel now, you know, I mean, it's necessary. But at what juncture does that, you know, demand for, uh, grave sites then vacate, uh, that road and we?
Um.
Just a ballpark figure, Ken.
You know, with, uh, I'm not quite sure I understand your question, but, uh, um, right now, you know, that, that area that we're doing has a lot of graves available for sale. Um, this year alone, over half of our burials or cremations versus traditionals where, as a result, this really slowed down the process. But, uh, you know, depending on how that trend would goes, I would say we probably have a couple hundred years' worth of lot sales available in that area. in that area.
No, I'm just curious.
It all depends. It used to be it was, we thought it was a hundred and fifty on projections, you know, where, you know, where I know that a part of it, especially if we would take a portion of the, the, that was purchased by the city for, you know, the former hospital property, but there's quite a bit of...
Okay, no, I'm just curious on that because, you know, as I walk, it seemed they'd close it down and...
And the nice thing is that we've been doing this for about twenty years and it is really, this time of year especially with this weather today, having a burial on a day like today isn't very pleasant for the family and the funeral.
No, no, just a curious question. At least it's timed in, so I don't see a problem.
Well, while we're on the topic of the cemetery, it's kind of adjacent to it, but the Legion did a great job cleaning that building. It did so...
They have new flags committed, yeah.
Yes, yeah, and there's flags to come, so I think it's going to be a good addition to the cemetery. I think it's going to really liven up that, that east side of the cemetery, so that's great.
Call for a motion.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thanks, Ken. Item fifteen is a motion to set a time and place for next town hall meeting. Any suggestions?
What month did we do the last one? Was it June?
July twenty-fourth.
Was it, was it August?
Twenty-fourth, it was the last Monday of July.
Sometime in October.
October.
You'd have an Oktoberfest town hall meeting.
Well, we have a, a council meeting the second sixteenth, is that tracking October?
Yes.
So you do actually have an extra?
Monday the thirtieth?
You have an extra.
Monday the thirtieth, yeah, we would have an extra. That'd be good.
Yeah, one's bigger.
Oh, yeah, good call. Would that be the thirty-first? We're having on Tuesday? Kent, do you know that yet?
Halloween's the thirty-first, so I'd assume it's on Halloween.
On Tuesday, right? Okay, yep.
I think the thirtieth would be a good day then.
Do you want to have it at the middle school again?
If we can, yeah, I think it's the best.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's worked out really good.
Been the best we've had.
I'd like to fill it up, I'd like to have to move out of that commons area. We get so many people, you know, we got to look for a bigger area, but...
And at what time?
Seven again, or six?
Six we did last time.
I like seven, but I don't remember what we did last time.
Um, it might be on my calendar.
Seven o'clock.
Pat says it's seven.
That's why I thought it was been seven.
Seven sounds good. Anyone else?
If we're going to hope to getting some more people, bring seven o'clock, it's a good time.
What is your second choice for location with middle school activities and school going on now? It might be a little harder.
Sure.
We had one at high school one time. I don't think we had as many folks come up there.
That corridor is so narrow.
We could have it at Ace. Ace, Moon Hall would work.
Yeah, that, that corridor at the high school's kind of bad. Again, if numbers got big enough, I'd like to see it in like the auditorium or something in the high school, but again, I don't think it's necessary yet, but...
So if the middle school isn't available, I'll check with Ace maybe?
We can't do eleven eleven. What? No, September, that's December, eleven. It's making it go down to the next one, but it's going to be up there next November.
So is there any topics that we've kicked around, like maybe the wastewater plant planning? Inform the public on that?
My guess to follow up with what we had our discussion tonight about the kid, I'd like to see either the police chief or the sheriff or both come and talk about the drug issues, I mean, I guess people involved with that, I mean...
Or you're going to push the, the mentorship program or again, give it another podium to, to get some spotlight on.
I mean, I'd like to see more visibility on that.
That'd be cool.
Anyway, we can, we can fine tune what we're going to have there. But yeah, everyone give it some thought as to what we might want to have topics.
The Winter Fest thing they're talking about doing could be a topic too, some ideas for that.
Yeah, the next, by the way, the next Youth Advisory Commission meeting will be the twenty-fourth, next Sunday at seven P M. at Flor Hall. I'm sure they're going to jump right in and we might be reaching out to the chamber board to kind of see how we can do that.
When is it?
Uh, the September twenty-fourth, seven P M. at Flor Hall.
I'm going to put that under reports.
I'm going to talk a little bit then too, but they came up side of the thread.
All right, so right now we need a motion to set the next town hall meeting from Monday October thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, at the middle school at seven P M. if that site's available.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So hopefully it's available. Otherwise we'll be changing. No, it's fine. Okay, item se... So item seventeen is a resolution setting a time and place for a public hearing on the proposed rezoning of property from R-one, single-family dwelling district and R-two, multiple-family dwelling district to C-three, highway commercial district. Said property being located in an area west of Superior Street and north of Fair Meadow Drive for October second, twenty seventeen, at five fifty P M. This is basically removing the public hearing that was going to be tonight until the second of October. The call for a motion?
So move.
Second.
Jinx.
Who moved? McKinney, okay. Thank you.
It was in stereo.
I know.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Next section is item D, reports and recommendations of officers, boards and commissions following items to be deemed to be non-controversial routine actions to be approved by the council in a single motion. If a council member or a member of the audience wishes to have an item removed from this list, it will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. You have a motion to accept the financial August reports, finance and treasury report, bank reconciliation report, investment summary, public fund account, F S B I C S savings, seven ninety-one, an F S B statement, and a motion to accept the city manager August reports, electric wastewater, water, electric year-to-date and water year-to-date, code enforcement, motion to accept the police department August report, and motion to accept the fire department August report. How would you like to do one, two, three and four?
Move to approve collectively?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Are there any other committee reports?
I'll just touch briefly on the Youth Advisory Commission, what we've talked about earlier, again, their meeting's Sunday, September twenty-fourth, seven P M. at Flor Hall, but more importantly, we are still one member down. I believe we have an applicant, but we'd like to open that up maybe a little bit...
They're taking, they're going to put it, middle school's going to put it in their announcements this week, so I'll drop applications off.
And by the way, that seat is of middle school, of middle school student, sixth through eighth grade. And then also, again, I ping you guys a lot, but ideas for the Youth Advisory Commission tech. Whatever you can throw at them, I, I appreciate it.
Do you have any suggestions?
Yeah, like I mentioned in other council meetings, naming of the new pedestrian bridge would be a fun one, they can really ping the community and come up with a creative name for it on the east sidewalk, East Second, East Twentieth sidewalk. Another one would be organizing a community walk to break in the sidewalks. There's not a lot of awareness of the new sidewalks we have now on Superior Street and East Second Street. I'd like to organize some type of community break-in, you know, just get them out walking. I'm sure you ladies won't be there, but I, I wanted, I want people to get out there.
People are aware, they know they're there.
I, I just want to, I want to get out there and get them, get some awareness. And then also, you know, dark spots. Some community members come up to me, like, there's some random dark spots in some sidewalks. I think it'd be a, a cool task to give the Youth Advisory Commission to go at, you know, at dusk or during the nighttime and kind of see where there are kind of darker sections of the sidewalk, one being that new one on, on East Second Street. There's a spot there that's extremely dark and I was on Ace the other day, I was, it was brought to my attention that there's a, a section about two blocks long that is pitch black, so just something to be aware of for safety concerns. So those are just a few ideas, but again, if you guys have any tasks that they can tackle, we'd appreciate it.
Move to adjourn? Motion to adjourn?